This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our October Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frieder, first selectman, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buwemi. We are socially distanced here at Town Hall. We've taken off our masks and welcome to our October meeting. All right, so I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from September 3, 2020. William and Sally?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve those September 3 minutes.
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Okay, item number four, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting from September 21.
And I'll motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting of September 21, 2020.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, I'd like to cover something that's very important to each and every one of you, and that has been the storm debris pickup. So Bill and Sally, this has been a massive monumental project. Our residents, the town of North Haven, we were hit with back-to-back storms, and it was quite compelling in terms of the amount of damage across the town. At the beginning, over 40% power outages, and that's almost like a record here in North Haven, we were hit so badly. So I made a commitment to all the residents that we would be picking up storm debris and that it would take us eight weeks to do so. And we are now in our fifth week of an eight-week process. It has been so cumbersome, so comprehensive, and so difficult that we've authorized the Public Works overtime, working 12-hour days. These are some of the same people who are also collecting sanitation and recyclables every day. We kept our commitment on bulk pickup in September, so we've completed that. But it's been an arduous process. Some homes have taken five hours for our crew to clean up, in some cases, one home. So through it all, we've made progress. We have still a lot more to do. We anticipate completing this by the end of October, and then, of course, we move right into leaf season. We're honoring that commitment, and that'll be an eight-week process, seven-week process into December. But ladies and gentlemen, I have to talk to you from a heart-to-heart standpoint tonight because unfortunately, we started to get many complaints. Public Works was getting complaints, my office, Police Department, about storm debris being in the streets. Now, we chose because of everything each and every one of you have gone through, with being battered by storms, with going through this pandemic since March 8. We've not really enforced that. Our people are out there trying to pick up the debris. But the complaints came in because in some cases, there were traffic and safety hazards which we reacted to right away. So once we get to leaf season, I'm asking you, please, ladies and gentlemen, when leaves are put out, please keep them inside the curb because we can't continue to have people calling saying that there's traffic hazards, people like to walk in the fall, children are after school, they may be riding their bikes in the streets. So we're going to have to enforce it this year. So if complaints come into the Police Department or Public Works, the Public Works or the police will go out and visit the resident in a very courteous fashion and ask the resident to please move the pile of leaves off the street inside the curb. And they'll get 24 hours to do so. If there continues to be a violation, then there's going to be a citation issued by the Police Department. So I'm really asking you for your help because it's become kind of a safety hazard in many respects with cars, with children, with bicyclists, and with people walking in the neighborhoods. So ladies and gentlemen, I know I can count on you on this, please. We will have leaf pickup, we will complete the storm debris pickup, but I need your help to keep the piles of leaves, the end of October, after we complete the storm debris pickup, to keep those piles of leaves inside the curb. That would be very helpful. So that's kind of where we are right now, and I just wanted to give everyone that update. Bill, Sally, any comments?
Yeah, well, you said it was an arduous task. I think that's an understatement. You know, I've driven around town quite a bit, and there is just so much debris out there. Your original estimate was six to eight weeks. I understand now you're extending that to the end of October. I think that is even going to be hard to get. I think that most folks did attempt to keep the debris off the streets. Of course, you know, not everybody always follows all the rules. But I also think in fairness that sometimes I could tell in my neighborhood that it's settled and it kind of moved a little, you know? So give people the benefit of the doubt that they weren't trying to intentionally block the roads. But, you know, I think your point is very well taken, that we've got to keep the streets safe, not only for traffic, but for pedestrians as well. And I just want to give a shout-out to the Public Works Department. I've called them publicly the infantry of our town government.
That's a good word, yeah.
A few times in the past, and I just think they're doing a phenomenal job. I mean, there's 18 guys, rank-and-file guys in Public Works, and as you said, they're keeping the sanitation going, the bulk pickup, and are just really working so hard. And we just have to be patient and realize it's not just the amount of the debris, but some of the debris is just huge, you know, trunks.
Trunks, right.
And I'm wondering what kind of equipment is even capable of lifting those. You know, so I agree with you, we have to ask our citizens for help here. So I agree that it's been tough, and I think it's going to even go beyond October, but I know they're doing the best they can. We'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, and they are, we're really committed, ladies and gentlemen, and it may, depending upon the weather, slow us down a little bit. The other thing I should mention that has slowed us down is there are many streets in town where we not only picked up the storm debris from East Oasis, but we started to pick up the tornado debris. We made the pass through that street, but because the residents, no fault of their own, had so much debris, they ended up pulling more debris out of the backyard, so our Public Works are going back now, or will have to go back twice to the streets that they've already hit. But you know what was interesting? I was at a mayor's meeting and we're talking about this, and I was talking about storm debris pickup, some towns aren't doing it, and I mentioned that we're following with leaf collection, and one of my counterparts says, "Leaf collection? You pick up leaves? You picking up storm debris?" And I said, "Of course we are, why?" He said, "We don't even pick up trash." I said, "Well, what do you do? What do your residents do? They have to go to the dump and they have to pay to dump it." I said, "You mean to tell me that your residents have to take their own trash and go to the town dump, and you charge them for that? Yes, we don't pick up trash. We don't pick up recyclables, leaves."
I thought most towns that didn't pick it up themselves contracted out, like Cheshire does or...
Well, yeah.
These are towns, where are these towns?
They're...
They must be little towns.
We don't want to...
No, they're actually towns with, you know, I mean, they're not, they're suburbs.
Yeah.
They're towns with 15,000 to 18,000 people.
So folks are bringing their daily garbage to a landfill?
Town dump, right. Or you can pay for a contract carrier, like Wallingford is an example, they pay, the residents pay, to have their trash picked up, over and above the mill rate.
Right.
But we, we're still committed to this, ladies and gentlemen. We pride ourselves on providing many, many services, and sometimes, as we've seen in this storm debris pickup, it's incredibly difficult to get it done sooner than later. So, but that's what we're doing. All right.
Yeah, because I think in some towns too, like you were mentioning, where there is no pickup, and the town doesn't contract for a third party to, you know, to do it. Some of the residents separately contract.
Yes.
You know, themselves individually, you know, have a service that picks it up, so. The, I think also, you know, the other thing too, maybe to note, to note too, is I think they're doing a wonderful job. I mean, just because there is so much debris and there's so few people actually in Public Works that are able to do this, you know, with everything else that needs to be done in terms of trash and recycling pickup. The, all the debris that they have, are we attempting to woodchip it at some point, or...
So the way it works is, many residents have had their debris woodshipped and have either brought it out to the curb, or we also offer our 14-acre facility, a 91T powdered metal road, that's in back of Mossburg. And that's a free service we offer. Residents have brought their debris, some of them have down there, but the town pays a lot of money to have it removed. So visualize a 14-acre facility that is loaded with debris. Because even when we pick up the debris, Bill and Sally, we, our Public Works people, send it over there and drop it off. So if you were to drive down there, you'd see what looks like a forest of debris. And when it gets filled, then we have to hire somebody to take it out. These are incredibly, incredibly expensive services that the town pays for. So we pick it up, we send it over to 91T Powder Metal Road, and then we have our Public Works people who give me updates when it's getting full, and then we hire somebody to get rid of it. Woodchips, to your point, Bill, make it a little bit easier, rather than, Sally, what you were saying, some of the big trunks you've seen.
There's a lot of them, yeah.
A lot of them out there, right.
Going back to power metal, you know, you raise a good point. You know, lots of folks have pickup trucks, you know? They could, they're free to bring their debris themselves, as you mentioned. What is the days of the week and hours that they could drop off there? And do they need those colored passes from Public Works that, you know, everybody gets six a year?
Right.
Do you have to show one of those?
That used to be what we did, but we relaxed the rules here.
There's so much.
Yeah, there's so much. You know, I didn't want to have the residents tied up in a lot of detail. So all they have to do is present their driver's license and they get in.
And when is it open, so people know in case they, people might be finding out right now for the first time that they could bring the debris there themselves?
Well, we have, you have, 7...
7:30 in the morning is when it opens to 3:00 PM, I believe, that closes. And I believe there's also Saturday hours, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
But all of that is on the website.
Yes. There's a lot of information, ladies and gentlemen, on the town website. And that, what Valerie's saying is, all our information is posted there. You'll even see, Val, we have the hazardous waste disposal, that we have an arrangement with the RWA. So for people that have old antifreeze, oil, paint cans, you know, we provide a resource for our residents to take all of that down to the Regional Water Authority as part of our relationship with them. And that's on, every Saturday, I think till noon time, through the month of October, I think through the 27th this year. But that's on the website also.
It is.
So.
I've used that for a number, a number of times over the years, and it works really well.
Yeah.
To get, you know, to get rid of, you know, I mean, oil-based paint or other, you know, not the latex base that you don't need to bring there.
Insecticides, you know, old cans of Raid is an example, that have maybe a little bit left, things that, you know, we wouldn't take.
Batteries, I think.
Batteries, exactly.
Yeah, everybody goes through so many batteries now because of all the electronic devices.
Right. So, so that's where we are, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you in advance for your cooperation, and that closes that segment, okay?
Well, before we move on to item six, I just want to bring up something, you know, Val had asked me late last week if I had any agenda items, and at that time I did not, a little earlier than usual. I did not put this on the agenda, but it is, it could be related to debris, at least I'm going to make it related to storm debris. And this because I was contacted by a resident since the deadline for the agenda was passed.
Sure, go right ahead, yeah.
And, you know, this resident wants to stay anonymous. Some people contact me, they want to be anonymous, some people are willing to have me mention their name. But this has to do with these signs that have appeared at Ridge Road School, Ridge Road Elementary School, that you can't bring your dogs there. You can't walk your dogs there at all. My guess is, it's probably because some people are breaking the rules and not picking up. But, you know, who, my, I'll make my, I'll ask a question, then I'll make my point. Who made that decision? Because the signs don't say per Board of Ed or per Public Works or per police, it just is a sign, there's about a dozen signs there that you can't walk your dog at all. And I'm just worried that that's going to happen at all of the schools because people need places to walk their dogs. I've gone door-to-door campaigning a lot in this town, and a lot of people own dogs, and they need safe places to walk the dogs. And I think it's especially true right now because all of the debris makes it difficult to walk dogs in certain parts of the town. And in some streets, it's dangerous to walk dogs. Last year, we tragically lost a citizen who was walking her dog on Ridge Road, a little bit south of the intersection with Dixwell Avenue. So I was a little distressed to see that restriction. I could understand restricting no dogs in the playscape areas, because obviously that's where kids are, you know, playing. But at Ridge Road in particular, there's that huge lower field, which in my day was baseball fields and softball fields, and there were tennis courts down there, that I don't think that school uses at all. I just think this was a bad time, given all the debris, to restrict dogs from using the elementary schools. Is this going to be an all-for? And who made the decision to put up those signs?
Well, I think the first call should have gone to the principal at the Ridge Road School, because that would have nothing to do with Public Works. So we'll certainly check it out. Could be Phil Diana, could be the school principal that requested it, could be the superintendent, so we'd have to check it out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just guessing that it's because people are not picking up. You know, I think that no matter where you allow people to walk dogs, there's going to be 5% to 10% of the folks who don't follow the rules and don't pick up. What are you going to do, you know? But I still believe that overshadowing that, or the more compelling issue, is to provide a safe place that's away from major roads for people to walk their dogs. And I just wanted to inquire about that. Maybe you can find out.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Who put them up? There's about a dozen of them there at Ridge Road. Who put them up and why? I have a feeling why, but maybe they could be restricted to... Are the playscapes all fenced in? I know they are at Green Acres and at Monowee's.
Yeah.
Not Monowee, Cliftonville. I can't picture the playscape at Ridge. Is it fenced in?
No, not the last time I was there.
But the Green Acres one is, and the Monowee, the Cliftonville one is. You know, that would be, you know, something, fence those in, fence the other two in, and restrict dog walking to that area. But there's so much other open land at those elementary schools that are perfect for dog walking. That's how I feel.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I think, you know, having had a dog for many years, you know, I used to run the dog around our neighborhood and always looking for, the neighborhood, there wasn't much traffic in our neighborhood. But we'll check it out. I would guess it emanated from the high, from the Ridge Road School principal to the field ground crew person and put the request for some reason. I don't know specifically, but that's the way it would work, okay?
You know what? One of the other elementary schools we did have a problem with someone who was walking, and they were walking very close to the building, and it was making, they were kind of looking in the windows and...
While school was in session?
Yes.
Oh, well, they shouldn't be there when school...
Right, and it made...
That's a different story.
...comfortable, so maybe, you know, it could have been a derivative of something like that, where they just didn't feel safe having people on the school property, maybe they can't delegate to a certain area.
Right.
I don't know. I'm not that familiar with Ridge.
Well, this is something that should be discussed, rather than just a dozen signs going up banning all dog walking on the entire property. You know, there's, there could be reasonable restrictions, but still during certain hours of the day, allow folks a safe place off the main roads to walk their dogs, so we'll follow up on that, please.
So Val, here's what we'll do. You call Joyce tomorrow, and then whatever answer you get, send Sally an email. Sally can get back to the resident. I would say that if anyone sees something like that, feel free to call the school principal first, because they're the ones that are going to know. The school principal is going to know why it happened.
Yeah. I understand the need to control it to some degree, but it's the outright ban that bothered me. I want to make that clear. I, you know, we want the areas where the schoolchildren play during the school day to be safe and free of certain matter. But there's ways we could work around that and accomplish both that goal and a safe walking environment for dog owners. Thank you.
In the end, it has to be probably a Board of Ed policy that's either been instituted or would have to be modified, but we'll check it out.
Yeah, before even bringing this up, I checked some Board of Ed minutes recently, and I didn't see anything. So that's another reason why I inquire, because the signs just say no dog walking, doesn't say per who.
Per who, okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we'll check it out. And she'll get, Val, Sally will get back to you, you can get back to the resident.
I appreciate that. I like to follow up when I hear from folks, as I know that you do too.
No, it's important, I agree.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, so we'll move to item number six, and I'll let Bill and Sally handle the rest of this. So Bill, we'll start with you on the resignations and appointments, okay?
Thank you, Mike. Under resignations and appointments, item number six, I'll motion the reappointment of Robert Hannan, 26 Highland Park Road, as the parking violation hearing officer for a two-year term to expire October 31, 2022.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Hannan also sits on our police commission, does an outstanding job. Thank you for agreeing to do this, Bob, and we'll call for this vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sally?
Yes, we have some bond releases, two bond releases under item seven on our agenda. I'll make a motion regarding item P14-19, 518 Cliftonville Road. The original bond amount was $7,500. Current balance is $7,500. So I'll make a motion to release the entire bond balance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I reviewed the documentation in our packet regarding this bond release and the conditions thereof. Having been satisfied, I have no objection, so I'll make that motion.
All right. So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, William.
The other bond release is for number P16-01, 1164 Hartford Turnpike. Amount of original bond, $95,000. Current balance of bond, $95,000. Release the entire bond balance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'll make a motion to release that bond.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number eight is the property tax refunds, and I'll make a motion to approve all property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll make, I'll motion to, I'll second that motion.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine. Okay, the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, November 5, here at the conference room at Town Hall. And we'll have some further updates about where we are at that point at the next meeting on the storm debris pickup. We probably should be almost the weekend to leave pickup at that point in time, and we'll continue to give updates in terms of how we're handling the logistics here. So with that being said, that looks like that's it. Sally and Bill?
Before I make the motion to adjourn, if I can just indulge you gentlemen for a couple of minutes, I'd like to, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, do a little bit of a public service now.
Go right ahead.
Our next meeting is November 5, which is two days after November 3, Election Day. So I would like to take this opportunity to encourage everyone to get out and vote, and I would specifically like to just talk about absentee ballots very quickly.
Go right ahead.
Because a lot of folks may be voting by absentee ballot this election season for the first time, because usually the reasons that you qualify for an absentee ballot are quite restrictive. You have to be disabled or in the military or out of town the whole time. This year, of course, because of COVID, anyone is eligible to vote by absentee ballot. And so I just want to tell everybody that you have to follow a certain process. Early in September, applications for the ballots, for the absentee ballots, went out from the town clerk. Now, people get confused between the application for the absentee ballot and the actual absentee ballot. You have to fill out the application first and either mail it to the town clerk or drop it off in the drop box in front of Town Hall. And then you will receive your absentee ballot. Then you have to fill out the absentee ballot carefully. Please read the instructions, because there's a couple of different places you have to sign, there's two different envelopes. You know, the ballot itself is easy, you've seen it before, you just fill in the bubbles, but you have to sign it in certain spots and send it in. Years ago, in my first stint in town government in the 80s, I served a couple of times in elections as an absentee ballot counter. And so I could, I will tell you that some ballots are tossed out legally because people didn't follow the rules. So if you're voting by absentee ballot this year for the first time, just take an extra minute and read all those instructions, because I want your vote to count. And I'm sure Mike and Bill want your votes to count. So read the instructions on the ballot, sign where you have to, put it in the right envelope, and either mail it in or drop it off in the drop box in front of Town Hall. But before you get the ballot, you got to send in the applications. And those applications went out a few weeks ago. If you lost it or misplaced it, you could go on the town website, to the town clerk's section of the website under forms, and you could actually print an application for a ballot. You can't print a ballot, you could only print the application to receive the ballot. So I hope that's clear. There's a certain process that has to be followed. And the other thing that I wanted to emphasize is, all the polling places will be open, you know, from the normal hours, but you should bring your own writing implement to fill in the ballot. And it should be a ballpoint pen, either black or blue ink. That's what the registrars told me last week, that you're encouraged to bring your own pen. And of course, you'll have to wear a mask to enter the building, you have to wear a mask to enter all town buildings, so that the polls will be open. You know, I thought long and hard about whether I was going to vote by absentee or go to the polls, and I think everybody has to evaluate that for themselves. You know, we all know, depending upon your age or any kind of conditions that you might have, you know, you might want to play it safe and vote by absentee ballot. So the registrars are expecting quite a high volume, and so far, they're getting in a lot of applications. So people are definitely taking advantage of the absentee process because of COVID. But I decided I'm going to vote in person. I'm not that old yet. I don't have any of the pre-existing conditions that should be concerned, but you should all think about it and make your own decisions on what's best for you and how you want to exercise your precious right to vote. I mean, I go to Stop &amp; Shop twice a week, and I'm picking through produce and, you know, people are, have picked through that. I don't see going into a gymnasium. I mean, all of our voting, polling places are gyms, so there's plenty of room for social distance. So I don't see going there with my own pen any more dangerous than going to Stop &amp; Shop, so to speak. But again, that's... But again, that's for you to decide for yourselves, based on your personal situation, and your, any medical conditions, or just any reasonable fears that you have of contracting COVID, then by all means, vote by absentee. Just make sure you follow the rules, get that application in as soon as possible, the ballot will be sent to you, fill it out properly, read the instructions, mail it back so that all votes can be counted. And so I'm sure you guys also encourage people to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to explain some of these things.
You're welcome. Bill, I'll turn it over to you in a second on this. Val, the, Sally reminded me that we had one person email us that the ballot was kicked back because it was a copy of the ballot. This was recently. Tomorrow, can you research that email? We've got to explain that, just what Sally said, that the, when there's a copy of the absentee ballot, it will get kicked out. Has to be an actual ballot.
And the two envelopes, so if they got a copy, they didn't have the right envelopes either. Those will, those will get tossed.
So Bill, would you like to make any comments on this?
Yeah, and for the primary, I don't know, Sally, did you vote in person, or did you?
I was unavailable the day of the primary.
So, you know, I mean, you know, and I, you know, I voted in person on the primary, and that was, you know, I think everything, as Mike was suggesting, you were suggesting too, there was social distancing, and everything, everything ran well. I mean, the, everybody was masked, so, but I think you made a very good point about it. You know, if you do go to the supermarket, or, you know, other places where, you know, where you're shopping, or have to be masked, it's, I think, I think all those things will be in place at the polling places.
So can I comment on that just for a second? Because what we've done is, this year, I got directly involved with the registrars and the town clerk in terms of how to manage this election process with some of the things you're talking about, with being in the middle of a pandemic. So all of our poll workers, I've authorized the, an extensive amount of PPE, masks, hand sanitizers, and I'm also going to be providing our registrars security at each one of the polls. There'll be a security guard there. And there will be social distancing, and the security guard will help the poll workers manage the flow of traffic to ensure that there's distance between the people coming in. So based on the registrar's recommendation to me, in terms of how, I asked, how can I support you in this? What do you need? We've given them everything they've asked for. So I think there's going to be a good flow at the polls if you choose to vote, as Sally and Bill are suggesting. But please pay attention, and I hope you did what Sally was saying on the absentee ballot process. That's very, very important.
Just decide the best way for you, whether absentee or polling, or going to the polling place, but please follow the rules, and please vote. Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
And mail it in before. The mail, I think, and again, I don't know the exact date, because I didn't ask for an absentee ballot, but definitely don't mail, try to mail it in on time as well, so it...
Right, well, I talked to the town clerk about that issue the other night, and the application for an absentee ballot does not have a deadline on it, but she is saying that if you're going to mail it in, mail it no later than October 15th. If you want to send in your application to receive an absentee ballot after that, she highly recommended that you drop it off in the drop box. You could drop off applications for absentee ballots and absentee ballots themselves in the drop box in front of Town Hall on Church Street, or you could mail in the ballots, but just mail them in in a timely fashion.
That's another thing, ladies and gentlemen. We authorize the drop box, and some towns have not authorized a drop box outside.
That's crazy.
So we did that for everybody's convenience, including not only our residents, but also our, our town clerk.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much for allowing me to encourage folks to vote, and to telling them some of the rules. So with that said, and with your excellent commentaries as well, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll see everybody next month here back at Town Hall. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of